All right. Well, I got a question from my counsel. We're starting, and also it's at seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for February 20 to order. First order of business on the agenda is a call for any community interest regarding the agenda. If you have any. If you're done, we'll go on to the agenda. So are there any additions or deletions on the agenda? I have one. Eight point four, I'd like to put in there as legal on the building on Main Street. We've brought our court things been done, and Seale Don talked us about that. Does anybody have anything else? No, not. I got a motion to accept the agenda with the addition of.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda with the addition of eight point four.
All favor. That is carried. The option, the previous minutes, the minutes of January 24th, regular meeting, and February 14th, many of the whole meeting. Are there any? Anything in there? Errors and additions? Anybody want to explain what we've done there? Not. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as.
I'm with the minutes.
Thank you. Call of favor. That is carried. Thank you. So, how about carries? Anything in there? I don't believe we've got any delegations. We've got a few people here, but that will give you guys a chance to talk at the end if you like. All business, first thing is the CAO performance management. And I've had some discussion in here, and I know there's probably going to have a little bit more discussion on it. So basically, I'm going to read mine, and then I'll turn it over to CAO Don. But the CAO performance evaluation, three things, satisfy the MGA under section 205.1, 207 ABD, 281 ABD, and ensure that the collective will of council is expressed in resolutions approved by the jury, and to build the instrument in conjunction with the CAO. The CAO is one of trust between the council and CAO, and as such should be governed by high ethical standards. Three options for completing it. One is by the council, one is by the mayor, and one is by committee of council. Once it's completed, documents will be signed by the mayor and CAO and placed into some contractual contract file. So when you read section 205.1, it says that a council must provide its chief administrative officer with an annual written performance evaluation of the results the chief administrative officer has achieved with respect to fulfilling the chief administrative officer's responsibilities under section 207. So then when you go to section 207, just give me everybody a copy there. I don't know if you've got it on your home floor. You probably know it better than me anyhow. But anyhow, basically, 207 says, is the administration head of the municipality, yes. My copy's not very good here. I'm sorry.
I'm sure the policies and programs of the county.
Yeah, sorry, what's the copy? Read it, John. This one.
Eight, 207A. 207A is the administrative head of the municipality. B ensures that the policies and programs of the municipality are implemented. C advises and informs the council of the operations and affairs of the municipality. And D performs the duties and functions and exercises the power assigned to the chief administration officer by the other. Magna door signed by council.
So basically, there's four questions. If you go, and then section 208, there's going in there. So if you go to appendix one, question one, has the CAO ensured that the policies and programs of the municipality are implemented? Section 207 also says, has the CAO advised and informed the council on the operations and affairs of the municipality? Section 208, has the chief administrative officer ensured that our minutes of each council meeting recorded and given to council for adoption and signed and kept safe along with bylaws, minutes, special meetings, and records? And last of number four on the section 28 is the CAO and respect of council committees that are carrying out the powers, duties, and functions delegated to them, and council supportive within executive advisory capacity. So in my opinion, that's basically what it's saying in there. CAO Don, would you like to comment on your recommendation in there?
Well, it was interesting because when I spoke for legal council, just to make sure that we're on the right track, the instrument has to be of a high level, and these are all the duties and functions of a CAO in the municipality. So the question is, are they being done? And day-to-day operations, council of six is being involved here, and you want to make sure that the resolutions are all carried out, directions are carried out. I will say we're operating under past policies of the municipal board, so we're still under operating by the policies that were presented and provided. So it's quite high level, and my job is to imagine it's a workplace for the staff of the chief. So it has to be done in conjunction with the meeting and satisfy the. But any example to ensure it's.
And so will we take this appraisal into closed session then? Will we take this appraisal into closed session?
I don't believe we need to.
We would like to, I believe.
I won't.
That's not your choice.
I move to defer this to the camera.
Me too.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. All favor. Carry. Okay, so will we put it to different, with camera, or we captured today, that we got it to do this today?
We go back into the agenda and add it to the camera.
There, you want to put it in a different setting. I'm going to do it.
Look, I don't think this is a one-horse discussion. I feel like it's a process that we need to go through together, and then at one point, bring Donna into the discussion. Like, I mean, it's not a one deal thing. Like, when I get performance managed, I prepare my goals and my expectations, the things I've done throughout the year, and my trainings, and my learnings, and then my boss tells me her expectations and sets goals for me, and we have a business plan, and all of that kind of thing. Like, it's not just a high-level deal, right? It's actual, specific goals, too, as well.
I feel the appraisal that you suggested is clearly lacking in the intent of doing an appraisal. You're simply just trying to check the box that says you did it without any actual meaningful intent behind it. When we last discussed it, we were to all go and use the same template that we have historically used, which is the CAO appraisal from the municipal affairs website. And we also bring that back, and then discuss and create a consensus opinion on those questions, which, yes, there is more of them, but no, it's not delving into the day-to-day. It's from municipal affairs. It helps you get to sort of a more full understanding of what council's opinions and thoughts are in a more holistic way, that we can provide actual feedback and direction to the administration who's checking the box.
Well, I looked at that list there, and I mean, that's 2014, so it's like nine years old, and everything's been updated. The MGA was as of June 2021, the latest one, right? And that's that one there, and that's the reason I did it that way. But that's fine.
But even if we go into camera and have Donna with us or not with us, I don't think it's a public session to have a criminal thought.
Yes, typically, yes, employee reviews are not done in public. That is very.
But that would be my thinking of going in camera. When it puts us liable for anything that may be said in public, which, when it's in camera, it's between us, right? Like, it's not public knowledge. If we have any concerns, issues, things we want to discuss in a private matter, that's, I mean, that's usually how you do a performance appraisal.
All right, well, we've already made the motion in council. I can just, we just have to hear, whether you want to do it today, or you want to do it next year. But you guys, I actually, I prefer to do it, you know, give it like a chance to come up what they want to discuss.
At a different meeting or tonight?
At a different meeting. Because I mean, we have a template, I mean, we've got one that was invented, but I'm not so sure that's very. We would come up with some different templates, whatever, that are coming into this.
So what are we going to do?
Oh, we should do it at the regular meeting, or we could do it at the council meeting?
So what is the plan, though? Like, what?
If they be prepared, though, we don't even know what we're preparing, right? We had decided on a template, and now at the last minute, we've no one. We had, because we had discussed this, and we were using the municipal affairs template. We explicitly had discussed it.
Well, I shared it with everyone and said, like, this is what's on the municipal affairs. This is what Calmar uses.
And what Thorzwee historically used.
Yeah, so this is like a point, and if we could get it printed off, and then we could start working through it and have discussion. Like, we've never really ever discussed anything, ever.
Why don't we bring it back for the, I'll be, of course. Take it easy, everybody.
I'm not going to be here, but.
There's no urgency on it.
No, there isn't.
Nothing pressing.
You know, the whole thing about this whole thing is that, you know, I mean, they tell you to do it, that there's no repercussions, there's no.
But I mean, just my point of view, if you have staff, which I'm sure you have in your lifetime, Corey's had staff, I've had staff, Tracy has staff.
Hundreds of them.
Well, exactly. You don't just let them do whatever they want. You give them direction, you set goals, you have feedback, you have follow-up, we have discussions of, like, the bosses, that's our one employee, and we've never, ever done that.
Most appraisals are done, the reason they're done is for, you guys, your bonus or your salary and tie it in.
Mine isn't. Mine's just based on my performance.
You don't do it that way.
Typically, they're done to ensure that there's an adequate job performance and an adequate understanding between the employee and the employer as to what the expectations are on both sides.
That's the most important.
That's the reason it's done. And yes, if somebody's exceeding expectations, there's remuneration attached, but that's not the point of a job evaluation or a performance evaluation, to ensure that everyone's on the same page, and everyone knows what's going on, if there's problems or not problems, if there's expectations or not. So that, I feel like whether it's tied to remuneration or not, in your case historically, I don't feel that it tends to a purpose of a performance evaluation.
All right, so I'm just looking on the calendar here for March 14th, it's the.
Tower.
Tower, and the 28th, so 28, don't say it over here. We'll lay it back on March 28th.
Should we do something to be prepared for it? Like, what should we, like, print off that municipal affairs template and start working on it?
We can do that, but I mean. Discuss that in camera.
Template's not over there.
Is there any question?
I need a reminder, I need a amended motion for the reporting of the municipal funds applied to the municipal. I just need a amended motion for the.
Yeah, I didn't have to testify whether it was there. I just had to defer it to the camera, and so I mean, I think I stepped to the mayor's discretion at that point, and that's, I think, as handed how it is.
Right. So we'll do that for a little minute, with March, all favor, March 28th. All right. Carry. Okay. Eight point one, be scheduled for inspections group. Do you see schedule there?
We do. Just one second. Yes, they pay, inspection groups pay, provide the remuneration for every permit. They've raised the rates back to pre-COVID levels, and one of the last to retract to those levels. And so the pre-COVID split revenue for inspection group is 75.25, a rate that we have not gone back to yet, one of the last to do amendments to the inspection group agreement. Then, but inspection groups are waiting to take it for me pending the item motion. We're recommending that council through amendment and press of signing retribution to the back of the inspection group at the 75.25 rate. What I've done is include the service agreement for you, so you can see what the schedules are, what the permit fees are for gas, electrical, plumbing, and so forth, and so that you have an understanding of how the permits work and how they move forward. So it's pretty straightforward, or, or COVID, I think, whether that. Whether, I don't know what it was, but that's okay. Pre-COVID.
Is there a service agreement?
Oh, the service agreement. This one. Paying the permit fee.
They don't set our.
Yeah, paying the permit fee, yeah.
First thing is the.
Yeah.
Get a little.
Thanks.
Anybody having a question on that? I think it's pretty straightforward there, and they're using these cross problems. We're not the only one that are using the same rates, right? The same rate everywhere.
No, not even close. It's wildly variable, and it's probably about half the price that you want in camera.
Really?
Yes, it's not, it's not consistent at all.
But inspection group doesn't do it now?
No, by my advice, it's not, like, even, yeah, there's not a standard set, yes, there's inspection group is superior, there's different, like, yeah, it's not, there's not a consistent uniform price.
Right, but inspection group charges all their clients.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand.
Inspection group fees.
And so it was 75.25, and then it dropped during COVID, and now they're just wanting to take it back to where it is.
All right. Anybody have any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? We thought, were there? Not, can I get a motion to approve the service agreement? Stand it here? I'll make that motion. All favor. That's carried.
And a second.
So a separate one for the schedule? Motion to accept the schedule as presented?
I can make a motion to accept the schedule as presented.
All favor. All right. Eight point two. Director of Emergency Management and Deputy, once again, it's the Adama Chief, coming on about, actually, Andrew here is on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Beere. A little bit of the language change, the point being of clearing, and I just plus the Emergency Management Act, and Andrew and I made a 9-1 decision today that will reverse it, so we'll give the director. Guys, we're talking to you yesterday. And so it's just important that. So that was our.
And you're, can we change?
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments on that, questions?
Are you guys working on the emergency management plan?
The plan is here, so it's been here, it just has to be updated.
Like, who's responsible for areas and all that? Like, if there was an emergency, you're supposed to, like you said, contacting FCSS, and they're, you know, they're responsible for all of that kind of stuff?
It's just responsible for, and the regional services, and I be responsible for, now including. So there is a emergency management plan, it's very thick, and we're going to go over what the EMA does this month, which should be cut down quite a bit in three quarters. Plus, we also have the regional emergency management plan as part of the council as well. So basically, has the council really become. Council basically is, signs the agency, signs that. Yeah, council's on the agency along with the city manager, the town manager, and both them, and it's a role, as you know, in terms of, to make sure there's an emergency management plan, and make sure that there's an exercise here across local people. Now, we've had some allowances with recovered emergency management, it's a test we're integrating now, so we'll have to run a table. And then the committee, which is Andrew and I, Cindy, and Sally, and Michaela, and everybody, we run the emergency disaster, and we run the tabletop, and we specialize in all the colleagues, the rail, actual gas, orders, whatever that is, which is, that's our job to do that. Council awaits, so we provide them the safety, and we declare the authority, the declaration, and we have some jobs, but your job is to ensure that we have a workable plan, and it isn't a bad one. They need something, but it's.
When you say tabletop, that means, I know from my.
That's okay. A tabletop exercise is where we decide, for example, let's say we wanted to, what we call exercise or test, the registration system with a reception center. So what we would do is, we would develop a tabletop, develop an exercise saying that there's a, well, storm out, and we have a whole bunch of people needing to come in and register because we can't get the cars on time. Same thing happened to Pinoka before Chris. They initiated their reception center. So what we do is, we sit in a room, and so real time, we try to, probably two, two and a half, three hours at the most, and you would have different inputs about, we have X amount of casualties, maybe we have 50 or 60 people who live in a reception center, they'll register, and then forty-nine of them, five rides, go home, five relatives, that sort of thing. So just getting close to the, and the volunteers, we can't avoid anybody from the reception center, you do register, and then it's proofed, and calls, calls on, and let those calls be reported to the emergency management, if it seems to give credit for the tabletop. So we'll look at a tabletop, probably next year, probably for the first three years, and in order to get new staff oriented, and new focus, and needs to be gathered for volunteers, it's easier to do a ice storm or snowstorm, because they can do that. It's just like having a tornado come and die or explode or something, that's after the colors, but an ice storm, rapid travel, it's a pretty nice, people can visualize that. Council usually isn't invited to these, so.
If you're hungry.
Yeah, they're working on, I'm not sure if it's actually, they started on, I don't know what you do, just looking at. Five years of doing an actual re-advent of a fire disaster or something, and that's where we end up bringing in all of our additional resources, fire department, EHS, everything like that, and actually doing a hand-on. But it allows us, all of us, like, doing stuff like that allows us to actually work together with our resources in person rather than discussing it out of people.
They're very valuable, we're not going to tip over a real car, you have to get out of the vehicle.
Well, I guess, yeah, it's all good conversation, but I mean, as far as the issue at hand, I move to, I assume you want two different motions. I move to appoint Andrew Keery as Director of Emergency Management.
And you want to, on a deputy.
Well, assuming you want two different motions.
Okay, all favor. I got a second motion there.
Yeah, sure, okay. I can appoint Donna Tona as Deputy Director of Emergency Management.
Yep, all favor.
I just have a question. So Donna, in regard to FCSS and the advisory board, does the advisory board have any, seeking any.
They do, they have a. Okay. Oh, good, that helps show your.
That's the big problem, is council's job is to mind their own business, and that's the problem, don't.
It's the hardest thing to sit in here and stuff, and things going on, wait for an update. It's really difficult and fast, if you have a question, and my role's probably to public information officer as well, to wait for my updates, and then to get yourself with the press. That's right.
Actually, under the ICS program, we'd have, you, the council would appoint somebody as a.
It's a disaster, and then you guys do all the work.
Yeah, it's really hard as councils, there's no question, because, I mean, it's well said, you want to get involved, you want to help, you have to, that's like your role.
All right, thank you. Okay, eight point two, three, letter of support, real station, Camrose Casino, and letter of support from Tofield, and I believe that this affects a lot of local groups around here, I've heard there's a lot of.
Oh, right, yeah.
You want to comment on that to your own person?
Yes, Tofield sent us a letter regarding the Camrose Casino. What's happened is a lot of smaller real communities are working for these centers for casino fun, and you don't get a, you don't get an appointment all that easy, maybe two, three years waiting for deployment. And for the Camrose Casino services, a whole ton of local communities around town roads, and they are very worried that it hurts families in the rural municipality, and it impedes what they can do, and it impedes enhancement projects, and they want, they want better equity, is what they want, and so they believe this is like to rural Alberta, and reading this, reading this letter, in my personal opinion, or my CAO opinion, I would, I would agree, that's why I put it on the council, that we're a rural municipality. There's been a time when some of our, we have that attitude about, at a party, you know, and larger casinos are cooling physical casinos, they're providing S-levels for rural Alberta, and the major urbics have additional resources, access and abilities, and the facilities outlined areas. So what they're asking for is, it's been a letter to the minister, the collective, to allow us all to have an emotional plan. So that's basically, it does affect all the rural.
Can I get a motion?
No, actually, I'm still a little bit confused.
Yeah, I am too.
The first sentence, under the executive summary, the town of Tofield is looking for support in the relocation of the Camrose Casino.
As Camrose is getting rid of.
Because there was talk about it going to South Edmonton.
That's right.
And they got denied or whatever.
Yeah, so this came, this came out, when I talked to them, that's kind of, they were mad that it was being relocated for a while, so that's what the executive summary is, but they also want that equity in, in getting better funds, so the executive summary is, it wasn't going to be, I don't think, I don't think that conversation is quite over. So according to, when I talked to Tofield, so, they, they want equity, and they talked about the relocation, because the letter of support says relocation. So they wanted, they wanted to stop or they wanted equity in the. They put here relocation Camrose Casino to wait for that inspection stuff.
But the point of this letter of support is to try to get rural communities to be able to be in the larger casino pool, so that we receive 80,000. larger casino pool so that we receive eighty thousand to twenty thousand when we do it.
That is correct. And actually, you know, for cameras, it actually, and I think we're promised that, but when you're trying to respond, you're trying to do this for your community. And all of a sudden you have that taken away from you or just part of the early design movement. That really, that really upsets Camrose and the surrounding communities.
Well, they need to change their boundaries or make it an Alberta pool.
Or
I'm not sure how many boundaries they have, but I know we used to go to an Edmonton casino to fundraise. And now we're forced to be in the, in the Camrose, um, boundary. And yeah, the profits are not the same as the city casinos. So I understand the wanting to move and being able to go to other casinos, but maybe they need to consider changing the boundaries. And then I go back to, I'm stuck on the physical relocation of the Camrose Casino.
Yeah, I
That's tripping me.
I didn't write that.
We used to go to St. Albert.
Yeah, no, I guess, I think, I guess that was always kind of my thought here. The relocation, I mean, as far as I understand, it's a private business and they should be able to relocate where they want. And I mean, we should have no input on that, but as far as making it more equitable, as far as groups being able to select it. You know, I mean, if everyone wants to go to River Creek and the waitlist is ten years long, but that's where everyone chooses to go and put it on a waitlist and that's their choice. Then making it more equitable where groups can have more input into where they wish to be on a waitlist seems better. And I agree that the cameras, you know, has just never have been as viable as, as it, you better off waiting for a longer waitlist to go to Edmonton, you know, than to go to Camrose.
And you wait a hundred years for River Creek.
Well, sure, but that's my point is if that's what someone wishes to, great. If they want to go to Camrose, it's a shorter waitlist, not the man one, great, they can do that. But it should be more equitable and they should have the choice, I think.
I'm not sure if it's the current state, but at one point they were inviting groups to sign up for Fort McMurie because they don't have a lot of community groups up there. So you could take a turn if your group wanted to go up there for a couple of days and, and get some pretty good profits by going up there. I don't know if that's still the offer, that was. So I understand the boundaries and yeah, we want it to equalize more across the province.
Isn't it generally every two years regardless, or is it longer ways than the city? I know we get it every two years. Oh, because I thought the schools always get it every two years.
No guarantee.
Yeah, I guess my thought is, uh, I mean, the relocation thing is kind of a, a point either way. And even if it wasn't, I mean, that kind of is not any of our business, I guess, but I'd be in favor of writing a letter of support in favor of making encouraging a more equitable structure for casinos.
I, I would agree, that's the way I would do it. I, I don't want, one time they used to, uh, twenty years ago, they just, everybody got the same.
Well, rural and urban should be good.
Yeah, the average mall and there was a new casino, but I guess they changed that somewhere along the line. And, uh, but years in this school, when, uh, this team, uh, time book, I used to kind of ask them and it was, everybody got the same.
Okay.
No, I think over the years, I think the world's house lack, loving, lack the board, I would say, I think in a lot of cases, the problem. And, uh, um, everybody thinks the rural county, but a rural urban interface, first and, 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 you know, all kinds of things. And I think they just kind of went, uh, went along to go along and hope for the best. But I think this is kind of rallying for my curves for excellence for the world. Have a lot of equity with brands, with infrastructure, with fundraising, with everything. So it certainly is on your direction. Uh, we will write a great letter to, uh, inspections group will Tofield to let them know of our support. This is it.
I was going to clarify, you said inspections group, I'm seeing that very clearly.
Yeah.
I'm insisting inspection team.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Inspection something.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I thought I clarified.
Yeah, don't worry.
We're about the inspection.
Yeah, you'll get a really helpful response from that.
That's testing.
Oh, I just have a quick question. The casino going on Highway Two, is that a First Nations casino? Or is that another one that we're going to be, no, okay.
Either south or the river.
Okay.
ALG, your letter you called cited this as twenty thousand dollars of dollars, some of the they moved us down.
Oh, well, that's
Because your church camp is in Pigeon Lake.
Well, did you give that picture, then you gave cameras and you're lucky to get twenty grand.
Well, all our volunteers and everything are in the city and that's where all our churches are.
I mean, it's, it's a very silly system they have.
It's ridiculous.
And then the, the profit profits don't have a lot of, I mean, how you make money, like how you raise funds.
That's where it should be in Alberta.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I like it.
All right, thanks for that. So I've already got the motions, so all in. Uh, nine point one, the board by law, so we have, uh, the bill is on that, we've given it the first and second reading. Does anybody have any comments on that, any discussions? That is not, thank you, a motion to, uh, the third reading of the board by law, twenty twenty three oh one.
I just did, I'm bringing one in the gallery. It's just the annual bylaw for maintaining our line of credits. It's not actually a oral per se, it's maintaining the existence of our, of our existing line of credit, just for operational purposes, essentially, so.
Absolutely, let's clarify that, yep. And that, um, motion?
I'll make the motion to just the reading of board by law, twenty twenty three oh one.
John, all in favor? Emergency management bylaw. Quite a word, apparently, that's eight point four.
Your addition to the agenda.
Yep. Gotcha. Okay, uh, it's an update for, and it's a, it's a secret update. Uh, last Friday, we were recording bench for the order to destroy, demolish the building on the side of the contract. Um, these orders aren't given very often. They are not given lightly and very rarely given up for destruction of buildings within downtown. Uh, we received the order, we received confirmation that in twenty three days we can demolish this building. And, uh, we're not due diligence, so, uh, the judge didn't even recess to think about it. The judge just went, it's not, we had enough evidence, we had enough pictures, we had enough, uh, expert opinions on it, expert analysis on it. So right now what I'm doing is building a, uh, building a tear down plan. And, uh, and your document will go out in the paper next week. I'm asking legal to draft me a section of that tender, whether it's right, because what we want to do is have folks that are local. But if you only have a hole, and I think it's going to take a certain kind of hole, uh, with, with the thick eyes, like a bucket. But if someone else has a tandem holed up away, we're going to be able to allow them to move that together under one tender. And, and legal said we can't do it, so, um, we want to make it fair to everybody. Uh, that you have a piece of equipment or something, somebody may have a broadcast, the sequel is another one. So we want to make that fair and we want to put that in the paper. So, uh, Andrew and I will look at, uh, rather than the best of the best in the next week. We'll see Alberta lab, we'll determine this town on it, I've notified the fire services. Uh, that we may have to have a, a miss sprayed over the building. Um, we'll have to turn it down and the board definitely want to do it in the winter where there's we're not going to be able to get it done. So then we'll put notice, we'll notice all, uh, notify our insurance company, we'll notify the, uh, Anken Street, the main street. We'll block everything off, uh, and I don't know if it's going to take three or four days to knock it down in May. I don't know as far as the contractor provides, but the street's going to be in community. And so we'll make sure we notify everybody, so it has to be taken back in the last, and, uh, we'll, 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 we'll work that. So the administration, still, I already got some of the administration saying, we got good clean bill, we can fill a hole with. That's why I want to do this under the way, if someone, a bunch of people may have some things that, that can all fit together in a collective payment. I think we're going to be probably, I think, surprised if we get away with that. I think so, uh, because they got a hole in all of it. So, um, I'm between twelve and twenty, probably.
Shock me.
Yeah, we'll be here. So, uh, anyway.
Twelve sounds better.
Well, I think twelve for you, so you, you know, shock them. Uh, so anyways, that's what we're working on right now is the, uh, Andrew and I are working on Um, that's what's happening and it is, um, it is a, it is a very, it's very sad, unfortunately, that, uh, the building owner wants away from everything, very sad that the building is in contact with. Very sad when you have to take down someone's livelihood, whether they are there or not, whether they like it. You have no joy, but we also do it with a, that's a purpose that we, uh, we accomplish something where as far as we have to do this the safe way to take it.
Well, knocking it down is the safe way, I mean, it's, it's a viability, as it does, you can't, I agree, you can't stay like that.
Yeah, and it's
The elementary school was taken down a number of years ago and as best as possible, yeah. And I think they made that school, it was a matter of a day or two. I, I just don't even remember it happening, it was so fast.
You know where most of that, oh, the elementary school, yeah, you know where most of the old high school is? It's in the hole in the basement, right, but that lot is like, I guess, I heard yesterday, all they did is walk, put it to base and walked over with a cast area.
And it's just
Hundred percent, even the gym floor is still in, the boiler is still, I feel sorry for that lot.
I just was thinking that if you needed any guidance at all, that maybe Black Gold can advise you as to who did their work.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I'm going to put it out there. I know Alex Bowman is a very skilled clinician with the hole. Um, and we have to be careful because there's that much space between a building and the liquor store. So we'll be talking to the liquor store about, about his insurance and maybe they cleared the bottles off that wall. We'll send notices to residents of Papa G and it's going to be noisy. Uh, they'll start till eight o'clock, but it depends, they're going to go to five, six o'clock at night. Uh, if you liked it, it's going to be bright and it will be like now in April, that's, that's going to help us. But we'll be heavy on safety, heavy on rules. A lot of people are going to watch, so Taylor Parker, she's going to be busy, confident in that, so maybe the shamer wants to do hot dog. Uh, I think that'd be kind of fun. Um, so, but it is, uh, it is a testament to council that, uh, that you did it right. That you did it properly and that it will be picked up. Um, that's, that's, like, you know, whatever. Congratulations. Thank you for that. Everybody knows what we're doing. And we'll take the mattresses with this tear down, they're sitting there, yes, we'll take the mattress. All right, so that's just for information. Sorry about getting out of order there. Any other questions on that? Awesome, in that case, we've done the board by law, a lot of order, that's over to nine point two, the emergency management by law. Okay, so, uh, we have to, uh, it's, uh, it's the first, so, uh, we're in third reading. So Jesse, correct me if I'm getting mixed up here, but about two nineteen sixteen, we hold the council's bylaw. And, uh, it was written in, uh, twenty nineteen in twenty twenty, the full year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty. There were some things that changed in the, as a regulation and perhaps the act. I've been on the phone with A and A, et cetera, over, over this and, and we basically cleaned up some of the language, set out, uh, set up some of the parameters in due fashion and in due bylaw, but our first order of business is to repeal by law. All right, thank you for that. And, uh, we gave, uh, first and second reading previously, so we're just doing the third, uh, this one. Can I get a motion? To repeal by law, two thousand nineteen sixteen.
Sorry, just to clarify, we, we have opened up the first reading, uh, we're waiting to talk to over the winter, we, we have discussed it with them. I'm sorry, I've been missing, but yeah.
No, I have, uh, yeah, they're coming out at the end of March, but I've been
Yeah, that's why I was asking, I thought they hadn't came yet.
Yeah, no, they haven't. Uh, they're just coming up to look at our emergency management plan, get to know a little bit. But I've been on the phone with them indicating topics to John Swift about what we're after in that. And we just cleaned it up a bit and each time you reviewed the bylaw, you followed up with the rate and you followed the new act.
Yes.
And so we just put the new stuff from the act and the rate.
Yeah, okay, I, that was my idea. I know they had very clear what they wanted a lot of times, so obviously we've talked to them, they're actually happy.
Absolutely, we have, yeah, for sure. Any other questions? What's been, I guess, the motion to, uh, by law, twenty twenty three oh two, to repeal the by law, twenty nine All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and then we need to go by law, two zero one nine sixteen. Twenty twenty three, I'm very sorry, you guys are going to stay with your Um, yeah, so to pastor's reading of by law, two zero two three dash zero three, titled emergency management bylaw. In this bylaw, we, we got a definition as per, uh, the act and the regulation. We've, uh, changed, uh, the title of part four to authority, so that the, so their authority, which is the agency, which is our authority and, uh, what, uh, what they consist of. How also they meet, uh, what authorities and powers they have. And then, uh, how to declare a state of local emergencies, which is where the council, how we're supposed to do it. And then what happens in the last termination, the last termination is due, we were simply because of COVID and pandemic. Because they lost, they f, they flowed and some municipalities didn't know that we let it last, we do another, uh, local state of emergency, do we extend, et cetera. So they've allowed a last termination, uh, question in here. Uh, we put in several buildings and, uh, we got into the current bylaw format that we are seeking.
Well, seeing as how we have no current emergency management bylaw until we pass this, I'd move that we Maybe we should have done that the other way around or something. Weird if a tornado suddenly decided to come along, great stuff.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on, correspondent, eleven point eleven oh one. Number is off a little bit there, but
Just switched twelve from eleven there, but that's
Yeah, number is wrong. Ten, twelve, eleven.
Any problems? So, uh, Thursday, uh, you don't, you want? No, no, go ahead. I was just going to say this is from Gail at the library. Okay, thank you. So, um, anyhow, that's the, the report there and, uh, basically the Torresby board would like to thank Torresby Town and Council for approving their budget for twenty twenty three. And, uh, in twenty twenty two, the Torresby tried many new things. They formed an art committee, started offering places for local artists, including, uh, Monica Kine, Andrew Powell, John Hotten, Ivy Road, Audi Road, who's been, who's been quite a while. Uh, they, these events were well, uh, received by the Torresby and area community. They hosted a coffee house featuring indigenous voices. They offered a weekly early literacy program Fridays. They provided English language tutoring, um, for, uh, local Ukrainian refugee.
They hosted second annual book sale. Everybody in the community was encouraged to attend. What else did we have going on there? They had volunteers offered the book sale in four days, they collected six hundred dollars. A lot of them were donated, Morris Bay foods and gifts, gave someone else completed a few, on service of which, coffee, found on the website. They started loading.
Loading this. Loading a wifi house.
I'm not very good today, I'm a little fogged up or something, I remember I was doing this stuff today. Anyhow, there's a great need for people who don't have regular internet, so I know that a lot of the students, a lot of people go in there and use that, so that's, that's a pretty good service that they provide there.
It's actually a hub that you can borrow, take home, and have internet at your house.
Okay, so, perfect. So, yeah, so anyhow, that's the report from Dale, and anything else that the library board of officials want to add in there?
Getting these settled with all the new members. And then the graphic is pretty cool. That was the next. Probably installed there. Yeah, right there. I thought it, no, I didn't like it. Jesse could do a testament to the library and how awesome it is.
Why ordered your books, are they online thing, or?
Any other discussion, anything else? All right, I guess going to get a motion to accept the library annual report for information. Do, on favor? That is, so, um. All this, this report, most motion, so thirteen point one, Luduk County Fire Agreement Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we received the Luduk County billing for us for twenty twenty two, and Cindy and I looked at it, we got our cash from the results, we looked at it again, and we looked at it a third time, and grant, increase eleven thousand dollars. So I immediately contacted the chief, and we have a discussion, and he helps, and understands what has happened, because we do share a very positive relationship regarding service provision with them, we work well together, and we're building a great relationship with them. So when we met with the fire chief in December, when I met with the fire chief in December in preparation for budgeting here, I asked him how much our, our fee would go up, and he said, no, not much, maybe two hundred bucks. So I went, good, I reported this to council, but he was talking about his budget, not our contract. So this chief, Tyler, phoned me on the chief's behalf, he says, the holidays, and he said, I guess we got to talk, he said, I don't think you've been down yet, and I said, no, I haven't said, it's just nice to know what's happening and how you calculate this. And so I requested a discussion with him, and it was extremely productive, very positive, with great communication, common terms of briefing, and here's the descriptions of the increase. We paid twenty five percent of the expenses within the service of, of the county fire, it is their portion of the first, yes. A wage compensation review was completed in Luduk County Fire, which was quite complicated. So, is this something?
Our documents inside are all.
It's just all squiggles. We don't have any of the.
I tried to read it last night, and I just.
So we're seeing it on big screen.
Okay, awesome. So Luduk County conducted a wage compensation review, and the old wage compensation review for the county fire was very complicated. For example, they gave firefighter minimum wage theory for training, actual wages call up, maintenance, minimum wage, courses for minimum wage compensation. It's that one piece, you know, at the alarm call rate, which increased Luduk's budget by thirty four thousand. Equipment and machine expense was sixteen thousand in twenty twenty one, and three thousand in twenty twenty two. Due to serious repairs on one apparatus, one thousand. They bought a twenty thousand dollar beer dryer, as like the firefighters, in the past, they were drying their beer on the slum, and it takes like weeks to dry, and they can't dry it, and it's not acceptable, we changed one hundred percent of that. There'll be maintenance regarding a roof leak, overhead jarring, other vehicle repairs, the tires, parts, and patches for a fire engine, which makes your eleven thousand, which is based on practice, and it's predicted for the budget, it's predicted sixty thousand revenue, but it's forty one thousand, over the budget before, because of multiple collision call up at that time, and in our sector, most of the, most of the traffic agencies are within our sector. So increases also predicated on call, that's something that I wanted to know. The call volume is increasing now that COVID has over, and most of the hard lifting is in the emergency sector. So contract, a contract rate, contract rate based on call volume in twenty eighteen was about fifty one thousand, twenty twenty one, twenty eight thousand, one fifteen, the call volume rose to a hundred and two already, which is pretty good for full proof. So my recommendation to fire, and I've said that to the chief, every chief, is that we meet every quarter, we take a look what the service levels are, what the increases are, so that, so we can start forecasting a little bit better, especially with the, with the bring adjustments coming, and we can, we can have more formal reviews, too, go for coffee, go for lunch, and chat about, and promote a better relationship, and we can mitigate one. So we have a better understanding of what's happening here, and we have been in a very good year, they're, they're up, their call volume is up. For some years, the call volume is down, we pay less, if it goes up, we pay more, but we can't help any kind of equitability, yeah. With the beer dryer, we're going to come up again, because it's a lot paid for. I did, I did suggest to them, though, that if they're going to buy big pieces of capital, they would kind of let us know, we don't have to give permission, with that's how the way it is, but just so we can predict for that as well.
Like, that is the way it is with, with, like, the rec center, if we spend twenty grand on something that they didn't approve, they say, we're not paying it because we didn't approve it.
True, yeah.
So no, that is the way it is in their agreement, that's not, they can't have it both ways, either, they can blindly spend twenty grand on a, on a drug, I actually think it's an appropriate expense, they should have bought it, but they didn't ask, they didn't inform us, and if we did that, they wouldn't pay their share.
No, I agree, counsel Corey, and, and part of it, too, is we've never had quarterly meetings with them, we've never sat down with them, we are now going to, I think that builds a good relationship as, so we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then these are things they'd amend of us, so then with the cost share the other way, they, they don't seem to get the good part.
Andrew, you, you got something to tell you, are you?
I do, I do. I mean, my thought process is on this, I think you guys definitely need to get a better breakdown of what costs are coming from, because I'm looking at some of the prices that are there, and I'm like, I've been inside those doors, and there's, that, that doesn't seem right to me. The figures that they're giving you, like Luduk County is, you just wrapped up, Corvusby, Calamar, uh. Corvusby is still based through Luduk County, but their staff is, their staff is paid through Corvusby, but their DC is paid for Luduk County. So the figures that are out there don't.
Well, I would encourage, I would encourage it securely, and thank you for that, appreciate it. That's why we want to be quarterly, with the, going on in a business like fashion. Who is happening, and who's probably something as well.
Yes.
But we, you know, we can, with the sensitivity, the sensitivity of my, people, don't have
I mean, it's an existing agreement, and we don't really have a lot of discretion in it, but I think it should be formally noted and pointed out to Luduk County that they're being hypocritical in this case.
Yeah, I, you still need to pass a motion with that language in it.
I, well, I, I mean, they have expectations when we're on the other side, but if they're on the other side, it, all of those rules don't apply, so.
I just think it would be nice, because, yeah, at the end of the year, we get a list of what they've.
But if you did that to them, they would have paid, right, and they even ended up front of us.
We budgeted for twenty twenty two, forty six thousand two hundred or something, and it's fifty five four.
Yeah, like you said, if we pulled out with the rec center or something, they would just say, we're not paying it, we would begin to discuss it.
Andrew?
I would also look at the level of service agreement that we have, because I know that they've been pulling machinery, none of the hall years, they increase that, other stations have either damaged or, or been involved in accidents, stuff like that. I know, like, that's, right now, we're down one engine, we're down a tender as well, that's also. If that stuff's being pulled out of our district, how are they still providing a stable service?
Mr. Monitor.
So what do you guys want to do, to send letter, I mean, is it, anything we can do with this, is on our?
I'm going to recommend this time, let us, let us start with a quarterly meeting, our next meeting's coming up, and we will be able to sit down face to face, and they'll be able to talk about, I'd rather, I'd rather start with a face to face meeting, kind of how I roll, and then for follow up letters summarizing what was discussed. So that we're, we're in the loop, and so that we can forecast, and if that doesn't work, I will.
A motion to accept this information, please.
I would recommend that, if counsel.
I'll make that.
On favor? Yeah, it's a surprise, that's for sure, like I say, they just wouldn't pay it if we did it, you know.
Like, literally had to like, sit down for a second, I was like, pardon me?
Thanks for that. Well, I'm, I'm here before the interim, and so we have, the gallery here, and you would like to address any issues here, Donna?
I just want to say one thing, I want to just go back to the CAO, performance management, it sounded like it was supposed to be, it was kind of sort of nervous about it, or negative thing, but I know when I was part of Black Gold, we did it every year, we did the performance review for our superintendent, and it was actually very beneficial, and it was constructive, it doesn't necessarily have to be negative, it can be a positive experience, but we did do it in camera, because it's not something, it's easier just to talk freely, and we actually got, you get farther, you can actually hash it out, or whatever it is, not that we needed to, but I think it's actually, I think it's very beneficial, actually, to do it, and so I think that doesn't have to be negative, it can, it's not necessarily negative, right? So, yeah.
Something that has to be done.
Yeah, and I, yeah, so, I just thought it.
Any others that want to comment on?
Oh, my husband's down there, I'm sorry.
They just had a good chamber of congress, they were getting it up for the long winter.
Yes, we had such a good turnout, I was really impressed with the people coming out for our meeting, and, and we're, we've got some pretty exciting things coming up, I keep it out, and I'll put it out there, but, yeah, we're, our mayor is going to be helping in with the soul pitch tournament, so, which is nice, and we're going to have a couple beer gardens, we're having formal tournaments, we're free, and we're looking for a sponsor to sponsor a train, it would be fun.
Like a choo choo around town?
Well, that's, yeah, it was actually Gary who sent it to me, and it's literally a train that, it fits like eighteen to twenty people, and you can drive it on the roads and stuff like that, it would just be something different, fun and different, but it's two thousand dollars. So, not necessarily, but we'll see, if, any, any new ideas, it was just fun to have new ideas, and a few more people at the table, and.
A what? So, and we'll be coming to actually a county meeting, the next county meeting, the Chamber of Congress, from the county meeting, too, for, kind of give you a better update, because I don't prepare to date, but, yeah, I'm excited, because we've got lots of really good things going on in.
I will do the next one.
Any else, guys, want to comment on? Everybody, Beth, I've got the, I guess, a motion for you. On favor?
On it, on it.
Video. Tips provide to show what the grant money was used for, from all of that. That's great. I could play it on. I'll move to it, Jen.
Thank you, Chrisley, on favor?